All right, the Bothell City Council is back from break and we are picking up at AB 16-121, which is a study session regarding the downtown parking management. And we have David Boyd to kick us off, our senior planner.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. We're here tonight for an initial study session on downtown parking management. I'm starting with this slide from the planning docket when you initiated code amendments related to what our parking requirements are for private development. And I just wanted to bring this back to reemphasize that we do recognize that there are definite issues with parking in downtown Bothell. We're hearing about it, as I know you are, that it is a result of the introduction of true mixed-use development that's brought conflicts between residential and business parking, closure of lots or development of lots that provided for spillover parking also has generated concerns. And really emphasize that this is a multi-dimensional issue. So we not only need to look at the parking requirements, we need to look at a management of both on-street and off-street parking, including enforcement, and we need to look at special parking demands, including construction parking, special events, and transit. So revising the parking requirements and developing an overall parking management plan needs to be based on careful evaluation of current parking utilization and future forecasts. We have identified a qualified consultant to help collect data, but currently there isn't budget to collect data, analyze current and future needs, and help develop effective strategies. There's not currently budget for that. We've got a cost of approximately $50,000 to start that, but we will be looking next week for direction from you to go ahead and do that and then come back to you in the fall with a budget amendment. And we're looking into ways to reduce those costs. So I just wanted to quickly highlight on some of the things in the staff report and in your packet. This whole section of the downtown plan was inserted into the staff report, but the downtown plan did envision the need for a parking management program and outlined it. And we've identified some additional elements of that plan that are all included in your staff report. The key issues that we wanted to address tonight is, in terms of parking enforcement, there's the question of how do we do that? What approach do we take? Do we take an ambassador approach that's focused on educating and encouraging voluntary compliance and only resorting to fines after multiple infractions? That's the approach that Redmond has adopted in its downtown core. It's not self-sustaining. It would require a subsidy from the city to cover the costs of the program. Or a self-sustaining approach with ticket revenues generating the costs of the program. Kirkland has adopted that approach, and it requires an inventory of time-limited parking spaces larger or large enough to generate enough ticket revenues. We don't think we're quite there yet. Our feeling is that the ambassador approach is the right way to start. And this graphic that wasn't in your packet is from our 2008 downtown parking study, just showing what we've got in terms of time-limited spaces so far. We've got about 250 total. Then there's, in terms of parking enforcement, there's the "who" question. We could do it with contracted on-street parking enforcement, at least as an initial step. That would be the quickest way to put a program in place. Or we could establish an internal parking enforcement program through creation of a new police support officer position, which is probably more likely as a longer-term option, again, when the inventory gets large enough to justify a full position. Either of those options will require a code amendment to allow what are known as limited commissions for non-police officers to issue parking warnings or tickets. So, next steps, we'll entertain questions from council. I meant to mention that our, the parking consultant that we selected through a joint process between community development and Public Works is Transpo, and we have Stephanie Hertstein from Transpo here. They've done a lot of work in Bothell with University of Washington Bothell, so she's available also to answer questions. The council member Samberg submitted some questions that we responded to, so you've got those written responses. We received some images from Public Works, too late to include in that response, so I do have those slides if you would like to look at them. And we're certainly open to other questions. Tonight, we'd like to focus on discussion and initial direction on approaches to parking enforcement, and also any thoughts on the hiring of a consultant, and additional analysis that you desire either for next week's, to the degree we can turn it around by next week's public meeting, or by the September public hearing. Next week, we do have a public meeting, and that may be focused on taking public testimony, but we would at least like to get firm direction and support of hiring a parking consultant and coming back with a budget amendment in the fall. And then the next step will be on September 6, the first public hearing. At that point, we're hoping to bring you some actual initial code amendments to allow the limited commissions and temporary paid parking lots to help us manage the issue, and to begin discussions on the parking provisions initiated as part of the planning docket and other aspects of an overall downtown parking management plan. So with that, I'll leave it open to questions.
Thank you, Mr. Boyd. Questions and direction? Councilmember Spivey?
Great, thank you. So, it didn't appear that you included Beardsley Boulevard out to the college in that diagram.
It wasn't included in the 2008 downtown plan, but we would be looking at the Village of Beardsley Crossing in terms of the data collection and actually looking at it as a case study, because that was developed under the previous regulations with a different parking requirement. So, we would want to take a look at that and...
All the on-street parking there along Beardsley?
Oh, I'm sorry. The on-street parking isn't time-limited. There are areas that are limited in terms of the residential parking zone. Is that what you're referring to?
So, why don't we limit the time on Beardsley?
Well, that's one thing that we could look at in developing a parking management plan, but yeah...
I think that's, I would like to look at having that time limited there, and also as part of our, you know, on-street enforcement program. There's a significant number of stalls out that way, and I think it would put us above the threshold for that Kirkland model, if we were so choose to go that way. I think one thing that, as we look at our on-street parking, I think it's done really well that we've defined each parking stall with the paint, just right in here, how they're defined. It quite often in areas where you don't have that, you get people parking in such a way that it doesn't maximize the parking. So I would like to see that as a part of our, a component of our enforcement is to have the, all the on-street parking stalls defined.
Just to answer the question about Beardsley, I think the reason it isn't now is that we've really focused the time-limited parking to areas immediately in front of or adjacent to businesses to get the turnover of parking. But anyway, that's certainly something that we could look at.
Right. And I know there's a couple offices, like dental offices and all out Beardsley near the fire station, and then you have people that are trying to visit at apartments or other homes that are out that way, but it's all sucked up by student parking. And so I think it's important to consider that as time-limited parking also, for those reasons. That's all I've got for now. Thank you.
And I meant to circulate, one of councilmember Samberg's questions was about the, our shared parking provision, so I did copy off that portion of the code and have copies of that for you.
Who would like to go next? Councilmember Samberg?
I don't see their responses to my questions, so I assume that they're going to come later.
We printed off the wrong thing. That was just the original question. There is an email in each of your in-trays that has the answers on them.
Okay. I'm not going to go through them, because we'll read them, I'll read them, and then be thinking about them for, is it coming up next week? The public hearing for this?
Public meeting next week.
Next week, okay.
Public hearing, September 6.
Okay. So I'm going to put those questions aside. On page 67 of the agenda report, there's a quote that says, "The city will consider plans to provide additional public parking lots and/or structures in downtown as they become necessary due to intensification of the downtown area." Can you, are we really thinking about purchasing parking lots and/or building parking structures, additional structures in downtown?
Okay, that was part of the, what was in the downtown plan section on parking management plan, part of the city actions portion of the downtown plan. So, that, again, that's certainly something that we would consider in developing that parking management plan. We have been looking, as opportunities have become available, at places, the main focus has been on places where we could provide park-and-ride parking for a new east-west bus route along 98th and 185th. We haven't really looked beyond that. There's been some early look at where we might, we started on a study just after the downtown plan, looking at sites, infill sites that would have difficulty redeveloping and meeting their parking requirement, just because of their small size. And so the downtown code has a provision for a fee-in-lue of parking that essentially would require some sort of a public parking facility that people could buy into then, buy spaces in that lot. So we've done some very early consideration of prospective sites for that, but it really hasn't gone very far yet.
Okay, well, I mean, if fee-in-lue, you know, parking is available, you know, and that can pay for that, that's great, but I just, when I read that sentence, I thought it was highly unrealistic, financially unrealistic, that we would be proposing purchasing additional land for parking lots and/or structures. So I don't want to create a false expectation by having that. But if you felt like those fee-in-lue programs could completely fund a parking lot that was at development expense and not at the city expense, except for the not getting, not impacting the fee, collecting the fee, then I guess that's one option. When I, when I read the study, or excuse me, when I read the agenda report, it seemed like the two biggest sources of problems with respect to parking in downtown were Six Oaks, that was identified, and employee parking. So where businesses' employees are parking in spots that would otherwise be used for customers. Is that a fair assessment, or are there other issues there?
I think there are other issues, and I think it's not just Six Oaks. Maybe it's, that's the kind of the locus of the issues right now, because that is the first true mixed-use project that is fully occupied, where we're seeing the conflicts between residential and the commercial uses in that building. What we want to do is learn from what happened there and make adjustments, so that as more of those types of developments are built, we can handle that, those issues better. And the employee parking is definitely part of it, and that's been an issue even when we did the 2008 downtown parking plan, was trying to identify spaces a little bit removed from the downtown core where employees could park long-term, but still allow the short-term parking for customers adjacent to the businesses.
That's all my questions for now.
Deputy Mayor?
So, in reading the Six Oaks parking analysis, we gave them a 4% green building reduction. Are they a green building?
They did get green, built green certification.
They did? Oh, okay. And so it looks like overall, we gave them like a 20, 22 space reduction in their required parking, in addition to the point, the .75 per bedroom, kind of, I guess that's, was that a new parking ordinance? Is it the first building that had the .75?
It wasn't the first building. It was the first mixed-use building, so it was the first one that could really take advantage of the shared parking reduction. So, the 104 preceded that, but that was just a residential project.
So do you have recommendations in terms of change, lessons learned from this building?
Yeah, we're already giving more scrutiny to requests for reductions in the park. They're not a given in the code, and we're not, so we're being very skeptical about those. And, for example, the Junction project is not requesting a reduction in the parking, because we let them know early on that it was unlikely to pass muster. But beyond that, the next step would be to actually look at our parking requirements and see if we do need to adjust those.
Because I, I mean, I read this, and the cost of hiring, I guess, hiring enforcement and what they would have to charge, I can't remember where that is, in terms of how many tickets they would have to give, just made my stomach roll. I don't want to be that kind of community where we have to make a certain number, a certain amount of money by charging our citizens for parking tickets. That just, that is not at all what I'm interested in. And I hesitate to have another $50,000 study. I guess it feels like we do study after study, and I wonder if there are any, just changing the parking ordinance, if that would help, and maybe doing some signage in terms of, like councilmember Spivey said, just having limited time parking, so the people know it's not all night long or all day long. That would be, I guess, my preference before we go and start charging citizens for parking tickets and $50,000 studies. Thank you.
Who would like to go next? Everybody's done on this side. Do you? Councilmember Free, did you have anything?
No.
Okay. I just have comments, too. So did you, do you want to go do another round? Is it what you're proposing? Okay. All right, let's do comments. Go ahead.
Well, I'm glad the deputy mayor brought it up, because I'm not excited about paying $50,000 to start on a consultant report, until we do a couple of things first. And I think it's bad timing to do a budget amendment in the fall for, you know, a $50 to upwards, a $90,000 study. When we have other needs, we could build sidewalks with that. And so I gave some thought as to what I think we could do before we engaged in a consultant study. And so that's why I asked you the questions about what are, what are some of the significant problems that are, or significant issues that are contributing to parking problem? And so I have a couple of points. First of all, I think we need to really review the lessons learned from the Six Oaks development. And I think that you did a nice analysis of how parking was arrived at Six Oaks, and I think from that analysis, staff can bring back to council new development regulations that eliminate the loopholes that you, or maybe not loopholes, eliminated some of the concessions that you described in the Six Oaks parking section, maybe even increase the parking requirements. Maybe the .75 parking space per bedroom isn't adequate in the downtown area. You know, looking at, how can we change our development regulations to provide adequate parking for customers and employees in these mixed-use spaces? So that would be number one. Bringing back to council, draft new draft development regulations, or planning commission, as the case may be. In the staff report, you talk about Six Oaks wanting to pay for parking enforcement, but there's a limitation, because they can't, they can't pay for parking enforcement on the street, because that's public right-of-way. Well, then we can create a mechanism where Six Oaks can fully fund the costs of parking enforcement on the on-street sites, on-street spaces around their development, because that's what the benefit for their tenants. So, we shouldn't be, as a city, we shouldn't be subsidizing that parking enforcement, because it's for their benefit. It's a deficit of parking that is creating that problem there, but we can certainly provide a mechanism where they can enforce parking and through, on the public right-of-way, that they are able to fully fund that. In terms of employee parking for the businesses in the downtown, I think we need to explore that more on the staff level. You mentioned that there were private lots, private property lots with capacity, so I think, I don't know if you were thinking about maybe the Lutheran Church, or what private property lots you were thinking about that, but if the staff could facilitate discussion between those private property lots with capacity and business owners who need employee parking. And I think, because I've heard from Main Street business owners, when they complain that it's the other guy's business, his employees, that's parking in front of their businesses. I hear that a lot. And at some point, Main Street business owners have to reach that tipping point where they're going to agree that if we can provide a reasonably close area for employee parking, that they all agree to use it. So there's, you mentioned the potential of private property lots. I would like us to investigate ways to maximize the use of our city hall parking garage. So, page 129 of our agenda packet, which is that old transportation consultant report, which you have to dust that off, and I looked at that, and I thought, I did ask for that, and one of the reasons why I asked for that is because it's a report that's kind of sat there. And maybe it hasn't collected dust on staff's side, but there was some important information in there. So on page 129 of the agenda packet, in that report, are various transportation management options for maximizing the use of city hall parking garage, which basically encourages employees to carpool, choose other methods other than single occupancy driving. And if we're able to reduce city employee usage, then maybe we can work with the downtown merchants to provide employee parking in our city hall parking garage. We need to develop a plan that provides for public parking even when the hotel is developed. And then, one of the problems identified was that Six Oaks residents need overnight parking. Well, is it possible that we could allow overnight parking for Six Oaks residents from, like, say, 7:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m., when our parking garage is completely underutilized, and yet they need space? And we could do that in an agreement? We could, you know, charge way less than Six Oak does to encourage that kind of use. I would like us to, and I'll send you an email that kind of captures all that, so you don't have to remember it, or go back and listen, but I want us to try these focused approaches and to see what that gets us. If we can, if we can deal with the Six Oaks problem and work on providing employee parking for Main Street merchants, do some of the, you know, the signing on Beardsley Boulevard, and then, after we've done that, and then revisit the code and see where we need to change things. And then after that, I think we would have, we would be a lot more informed on what we would like our future transportation parking management program to look like.
That it?
That's it.
Okay. Who would like to go next? Councilmember Spivey?
Great, thank you. I think one of the things that we need to look at is, one of the problems with Six Oaks is the fact that they are charging their residents for parking, and I think maybe we need to look at some, something that encourages not charging for parking of their own residents. That's why they're parking in the street. And if they're parking in the street, maybe we need to have a overnight parking by permit only, and essentially charge the going rate, which would be the Six Oaks rate at that And I agree with councilmembers that, I don't want our funding to be tickets, but, you know, it's common to pay to park, you know, a meter. One day I was on my bicycle, and I was coming down Beardsley, and I started counting parking stalls, and I rode through the downtown, and I started counting parking stalls down, and I thought, you know what? A dollar an hour, I'll take half, I'll retire from the fire department, and I'll manage parking enforcement. It's, I think, just by having meters, or the more modern-day, the dispensers where you put the sticky on the inside of your window, I think that would pay for a parking enforcement program, where we're not relying on tickets to pay for the program, but we're just relying on a reasonable, reasonable fee to park for a given time period to cover the program. I think it's there. But I do want to explore the, like I say, overnight parking permits for areas where we do have problems around other businesses. The, I mean, kind of interesting, the idea of Six Oaks parking in city hall, but then that's just moving the, I think in the future, taking away future parking, because the idea is things get busier in downtown, people will be using the city hall parking. So I just see it shifting the problem from one spot to another. So, I don't know, it's interesting. I'd like to maybe discuss that more, but I think we need to consider, you know, the 50 cents or a dollar per hour parking in our on-street parking during the business hours, and in areas where it's problematic for businesses overnight, like Almaro and Six Oaks, maybe we need to have an overnight parking permit there. So that's my two cents worth on comments.
Any other comments? Deputy Mayor?
Is it too late to ask a question? So I found the section that talks about the cost recovery model. That if we had a civilian employee to perform parking enforcement duties, they would have to issue over 1,500 parking tickets per year, more than six and a half times the number of tickets written citywide in 2014. So my question is, councilmember Spivey just talked about, the cost would somehow be offset by parking meters, so was that not taken into account with this?
That's correct. That analysis was just based on time-limited parking with enforcement. That analysis was just based on time-limited parking with enforcement. They didn't consider metered parking or, so that, that's another, another whole approach that would be worth considering, that we just do not have the expertise on staff to, to really come up with a viable recommendation.
So that would lead us back to a $50,000 study if we wanted to do that?
Yeah, and I would say that the, it's a phased study. So we could start with just the basic data collection that we need so that we're, the solutions that we're coming up with are, are based on, on, on evidence and, and that we're coming up with the right solution and not increasing the requirements so much, for example, that we're boosting the cost of, of the housing in downtown even further. So it doesn't, there really is no, there is no such thing as free parking. Somebody pays for that parking. It's expensive to build structured parking. So it's either going into the rents, it's going into the, what you pay for the goods of the stores, even the on-street parking, we're paying for that through our construction of streets and maintenance of streets. So, so we really do need, need some good expert help with sorting through this very complex problem. And it could be done in a more incremental way.
Okay, I guess I'm interested in talking about that with the next budget cycle, or you know, the budget cycle we're in now, rather than making a budget amendment.
Any other comments? So I guess by, we don't want to be like Kirkland on the enforcement, but I don't see, I guess I don't have a whole, a lot of angst about 1,500 tickets per year. I mean, when they're clocking it at 19,000 tickets a year, you know, a passive system of trying to enforce the rules that, that we establish, I don't think is unnecessary. I'd rather see that actually than actually require payment for parking. But, well, the other thing too is that, and it's already been said, but I'll just say it again, I think it's important to look at the development requirements and make sure that we are actually requiring them to build enough parking for the structure that they're building. But with all this stuff, I mean, it is, it's complex. And I could see why we would want to have a study done to look into the issue and try to get our arms around this, because I would assume we have a few other projects that are going to get built under the current standards that are already in the pipeline and already vested to a certain parking amount. And so this situation isn't just going to end because Six Oaks didn't have a good parking setup. There's going to be other buildings that are going to get built. So we're not going to get out of this easily. And so I think it would make sense to look at a long-range plan for how we're going to address the stuff that's in the pipeline on top of Six Oaks and figure out what are we going to do so that people actually can use the stores and have a place to park when they are at home in downtown and throughout the city for that matter. I was, I was at the PCC opening this morning and you wouldn't believe how full that parking lot was when there was no stores open. So it's, it's not just downtown. This is probably a bit bigger. I don't know what the scope of a $50,000 parking study is, but I don't think it's just limited to downtown where we're seeing a lot of people parking, coming in from other cities even, parking in parking lots and hopping on buses to get downtown. That type of stuff is happening. Parking rides are overflowing. So I hope that we kind of have a look at that as well in, in the study to try to figure out how we can get our arms around this and try to make it so that we have enough parking. And those are my comments. Any other comments from the quiet ones? Nope? Okay. Is that enough direction?
Thank you. That's, that's great. And we'll, I'll try to address some of those in next week's, if not the packet, in the presentation next week.
Great. Thank you. And then obviously a scope of the contract of, what $50,000 does, that would be in there.
There, there's a preliminary, preliminary scope in, in the packet for tonight, so.
Oh, there is?
But.
Oh, there you go.
We can potentially flesh that out.
Okay. Thank you. So we're on to our last item. Well, just real quick, do we have an executive session? Okay. Council, council committee reports? Do we have any? We have one?
Just real quickly.
Oh, no, wait, no, we got one more agenda. I'm just trying to figure out what we're doing for time here. And then we had the addition of the Wash Dot letter. So, okay, so AB 16-122, study session regarding potential amendments to Chapter 2.13 BMC Code of Ethics. And we have Paul Byrne, our brand-new interim city attorney here to provide a presentation with. I believe, Bob Jean, you're going to.
Yep. If I could, maybe, I was hoping, for those at home that haven't had a chance to view last night's council meeting, I was hoping we would get some clarity out of that meeting. Actually, what we got was a lot more questions than answers, I'm afraid. The, I mean, the discussion was substantive, but it, it basically talked about, you know, there's the Open Public Meetings Act and what the rules are with that. And clearly that is a moving target. The court cases and the precedent is getting narrower and more restrictive. How that then ties to, or references the Protocol Manual, the Ethics Code, those elements, I was hoping we'd get a little clarity, could get some direction tonight and then come back with an amendment to the code next week and, and go forward. I think it's more complex than that. And I guess what, and, and I asked Paul to be prepared to talk about it a little bit, we would like some guidance tonight, but I think what we would like to suggest to staff is that we actually do a more substantive review of the Protocol Manual, things that are referenced in the Ethics Code that probably should be in the manual, the aspirational elements, some of the issues relating to the narrowing of what would be a city ethics code review, and then using the Protocol Manual to give some guidance on what the rules are and expectations are on open meetings. And it's, it's gotten more complex every time we, we get into it. And things that used to be given as okay, now the courts and, and Attorney General and attorneys are saying, well, probably not. So I think what we'd like to suggest tonight is that we talk about the elements that Paul's prepared to address, the, the issues about, do you want the OPMA-type violations to be dealt with as a city ethics complaint, or does that stand alone under the state statute? There's a whole process for that. Do we need to look at broadening the authority under the Ethics Code to add investigative authority, or should it stay a review on the record? The issue on timing, on process, if it's a more broad investigative process, we probably need more time. If it stays as the code is now, the time probably pretty close. What do you do with the aspirational elements that are in the code? There's statements, in some ways I would call them whereas clauses of an ordinance or a resolution that sort of state what we're trying to do, but then the meat of it is, is more prescriptive. And then there's the final element that didn't really come up last night, but in conversations with city attorney and, and staff, is, and if you do amend the code, when do those take effect? Do those amendments take effect as of the date of any complaint that's filed? Or is it to the date of when the alleged violation may or may not have occurred? So there's about five different things. They, they don't all nicely neatly sequence. The attorneys didn't give us black and white answers. They gave us more judgment calls. And so I think we're going to have to separate it a little bit, define it a little bit better, but we'd have some, if you could give us some guidance tonight on those questions I just highlighted, Paul can walk you through them. Then I think we can come back to you, probably in September is what I'm thinking at this point, rather than trying to get it turned around by next Tuesday. So that's my introduction. I wish I had greater clarity to offer, but I have more questions after last night. And I know after the meeting, talked to many of you and you had the same questions.
Good.
So as Bob said, I was basically going to talk you through those five talking points and the options that you have, and then field any questions that you have and take down comments and address those in the code. The first of which is the Open Public Meetings Act. And as Bob had said, that there's an independent cause of action under the Open Public Meetings Act through the State Auditor's Office. And I also spoke with Wayne Tanaka. He indicated that he also believes that a private citizen can pursue a private cause of action under the Open Public Meetings Act through a lawsuit. And so whether or not we want to then have, essentially it would be as a shortcut through our Ethics Code in order to allow people to circumvent those state processes. That kind of ties into the second part, which is the independent investigation that we spoke about a little bit last night. With the independent investigation, the way it works is that someone can make allegations. The city attorney then reviews them on a prima facie basis, so that if those allegations are correct, and there's no opinion as to whether or not they are, but if they are correct, would those formulate a violation? And if so, then it's forwarded on to the ethics officer. And the prima facie standard is a very low standard. So if you decide to take the OPMA violations out of our code and allow the state process to be the sole mechanism for addressing OPMA violations, you're then, essentially it's a more, as Wayne Tanaka said yesterday, it's more cumbersome process, but it puts the onus more upon the complainant in order to more fully vet that. With us, they can, like I said before, make basically up just above an allegation that would survive, survive a prima facie test. And then it's sent on to our ethics officer. The ethics officer then, if you guys decide, may or may not do an independent investigation and then yield a result. So it really is dependent on what you guys want as the formal process. You can go through the state process, puts the onus on the complainant, or you can keep the process the same. The onus is still on the complainant in order to provide enough information for the ethics officer just to make a decision on the record. You can expand it so that the ethics officer can then do an independent investigation. We would need some direction on how far you would like that to go in terms of time, expense, or the scope in terms of the ability to subpoena, interview people, examine independent records. And then finally, the, next to last, the aspirational standards that are found in 2.13.040B1 through 11. We talked about those last night, how those, the, the premise is that officials are encouraged to imply, comply with the following standards. But then in Scott Masall's analysis deemed that those could be ethics violations if those aspirational standards are not met. We talked about the problem with that last night, especially with the, number one, the personal integrity of the personal and professional conduct of officials must be above reproach and avoid even the appearance of impropriety, and how that creates a really high standard for each of the council members to meet at all times, essentially. So if someone is offended or doesn't feel that your conduct is above reproach at all times, the person can then, in theory, file an ethics complaint, which would then trigger this process. And then finally, the thing that we discussed today is the effective date. So the current code as it exists took effect on December 12th of 2015. It was passed by this, by the former council on December 1st of 2015. So the next question is, if a violation were to occur, let's say on June 1st of this year, the code as it currently exists is the one in, is the one that we would look to. If it's changed, the question then is, let's say it's changed on September 15th. On September 15th, if someone then files a violation, do we look at the code as it exists on September 15th and go forward from there? Or if the alleged violation occurred when this code was in effect, do we then apply this code's standards? And that would be something that would have to be addressed in whatever code revisions are made, if any are made. So with that said, I'll take any questions, do my best to answer them. I know it's not the most clear process at this point, but that's what we're hoping to, to correct.
So do all council members have the five questions written down? Do you want me to go over them again?
Oh, yeah.
We get to go? Okay.
The first question is whether or not the Open Public Meetings Act violations should be removed from the current code. Currently, someone can file an ethics complaint against a city official for violation of the OPMA. The second question is whether or not.
No, we should just do them, but then we'll all each have a turn going through each, all five of them.
The second is whether or not, so currently the ethics officer can only review what is before him that has been presented by the complainant and the responses provided by the, the person who's being complained against. Currently, the ethics officer can only review that information in rendering his decision. So the second question is whether you'd like to expand the powers of the ethics officer to do a more independent investigation? And if so, to what extent? The third question is regarding the timeline under BMC 2.13.080A4, which requires the ethics officer to provide a, render a decision within 10 days after receipt of any responses. Mr. Tanaka indicated yesterday that that's an appropriate time period if he's just reviewing what's before him, a review of the record that's been presented. Obviously, if there's some sort of investigation that occurs, we would have to adjust that time period. The fourth question is what to do with the aspirational standards under BMC 2.13.040B1 through 11. And again, speaking with Mr. Tanaka, he indicated that, and I, and speaking with Bob, those are something that could be incorporated into the Protocol Manual. And then any, any reference to the Protocol Manual could be taken out of the code so that they would be two separate and distinct courses of conduct. That would be expected to be followed. And then finally, when would the, when would you like the effective date to be? And would it apply retroactively to complaints that occurred or allegations, violations that occurred before the effective date?
Great. Who would like to go first? Please try to answer the five questions when it's your turn. Deputy Mayor?
Question one, should the OPMA be removed from current code? Do you have a recommendation on that?
I think what's best for the city is for it to be removed. And that way there is a formal process vetted through another agency. They have their own investigative staff. And that way it, sorry, it cleans up what can be, it pairs down what would be an ethics violation for the city or for the city officers. So a lot of, a lot of what people see most recently in terms of who reacted a certain way on the dais and that there were allegations of an OPMA violation, those would be vetted through a different agency. I think a lot, that's a, a large concern, as Mr. GiGiulio talked about last night, in terms of the public trust, the appearance of fairness, and making sure that the council has all of their conversations on the dais. And so I think that is legitimately of public concern. But as Bob has said, there is an avenue for that that exists elsewhere. And so it's kind of, like I said earlier, kind of taking a shortcut, expending city resources when they don't need to be.
Okay. So I guess I would go with your recommendation, because I think it would save the city money and maybe prevent some frivolous ethics complaints from coming in. Second, ethics officer review. This one's harder. I guess I would add, I, I think they should be supplied with public records to at least review that if, if they want to. I don't know if, it sounds like Mr. Tanaka was given the complainants packet and then our responses, but then no further information.
And he had, and he did indicate he had additional questions.
Yeah, and so I think it makes sense to give them access to public record. I guess I'm concerned about having some sort of bar, because obviously the amount of money it costs is exponentially higher when you start doing investigations. And I, I don't think every ethics complaint warrants extensive, or even any interviews when we know that it will probably at least double the cost of the complaint.
Correct. And the other thing to keep in mind is that because of the Public Records Act under Chapter 4256 of the Provide Code, Revised Code of Washington, any citizen can make that request as well. And as we know, that the, in the ethics complaint, they have up to two years in order, in which to file a complaint. That's more than enough time for any request under the Public Records Act. So again, it would, if you limited the investigation to, or limited the analysis to just the record before the hearing examiner, it would again put the onus on the complainant to do that public record request, to see if there's anything there. And maybe through that process, the person would decide, well, I'm not finding anything. Maybe there's nothing there, maybe there's something there, but it can't be proven. And it really then, it, it allows for an extra step to be taken by the complainant rather than simply, I don't want to say firing off a complaint, but there's a lot less work involved for a complainant if they're simply able to make allegations, swear to it under penalty of perjury based on personal information and their belief that a violation has occurred. If we don't allow the ethics officer to do an investigation, including public records, again, it puts the onus on the complainant to do that legwork. Might give them pause to reconsider whether or not they actually think that it's worthwhile to go forward.
Okay. So I, I mean, I guess I would look for some information from you in terms of suggestions at what point would interviews be warranted or investigation be warranted. I don't think every ethics complaint probably would require that, but I, I mean, obviously there will be times.
And you're going to get my answer, but it's the answer that we heard last night. It depends. It depends on the allegations before the ethics officer. And that sometimes the public records request and interview might prove very fruitful in helping the ethics officer make a decision either way, that yes, there was a definite violation or definitely there was not. And in this case, Mr. Tanaka indicated and made a finding that there was no ethics violations, but he did indicate he had some questions, that perhaps a review of some public records, if they were provided, or perhaps some interviews, if the people he wanted to interview were compelled to be interviewed, could have cleared things up much more quickly.
Well, and I guess the issue that I have is what's forwarded to the ethics officer. I remember one specifically was the allegation that you, the agenda could not be changed that night. Clearly, last night, Mr. Giuglio said that's absolutely okay to change the agenda that night. But that had to be referred to the ethics officer, which to me is a complete waste of money when you, I assume, would be able to make that determination and throw that out. But because of how it's written, the standard right now is just if it were true, but you know what I'm saying? There should be some bar.
Right.
And if the city attorney can determine, that has absolutely nothing...
And that's the weighing mechanism, and that's the policy decision that has to be made, is that we definitely want to provide an avenue for citizens to be able to voice their concerns. And we want there to be some bar, but not such a high bar that, and again, the reason that we have an independent ethics officer is that he or she can then make his or her independent evaluation free from the city attorney's office and free from any other employee's perspective. Because there is that appearance of fairness, that if you then farm it out to someone that doesn't have close ties to the city, they don't really have a dog in the fight, so to speak. And so there does have to be some bar, so we don't just forward everything on to the ethics officer. But whether it's a high enough bar that it then would chill, have a chilling effect for people to file complaints, that's the policy determination that council has to decide.
Yeah, I guess I feel like the bar's too low right now. When you can file an ethics complaint based on whether, what someone's expression is on their face, to me, that's a little, a little low. And then as far as timeline, I guess it would depend on whether or not there will be investigation. Mr. Tanaka basically said it was fine the way it is now, but if it were to change, obviously, he would need more time. I'm fine with moving the aspirational standards to the protocol manual. I'll stop at that. And then as far as effective date, I think for me, either we make it the day that we vote on the ethics, the changes to the ethics code, or we go back two years. Because those seem like the only fair dates to do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Who would like to go next? Councilmember Ragley?
Well, initially, I was going to say have the OPMA stay with us, but it sounds like it would be best to farm it out, so to speak. I am in favor of the ethics officer having, being able to have an independent investigation and compiling one. Aspirational standards, I think, need to be put in the protocol manual. I agree with Deputy Mayor to be. Effective date of the violation would, in my mind, be the code that was in effect at that time. We'd have to increase the timeline of the ethics officer if they are going to do an investigation, and I'm not sure how long we should, should put that out. I also think that we should probably increase the timeline of when an ethics complaint can be given. Right now, it's two years.
Correct.
From the time of the complaint. And I think that's in the Bothell municipal code. And I think, you know, I think we need to look at that also.
In terms of...
Extending it out.
So that you could go further back in the past?
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Councilmember Freed?
I think something the council maybe should consider is the state has code of ethics for council members, correct?
They do.
Part of state law. Do we need an ethics code ourself? I know the council passed one in December of last year, but maybe the council should consider whether this is needed or not. Or is the code already written by the state? It's controlled by the state. If somebody wants to bring a complaint forward on OPMA, they can do it through a legislative or legal process like Mr. Byrne mentioned. So, I mean, number one, the question is OPMA, remove it or keep it? I'm wondering, do we need the ethics code at all? Ethics codes in the city of Monroe have been used over and over and over again and often can cause some divisiveness on the council. So it's something that I think we should consider. But for number one, I would think the OPMA can be controlled by the state. I think how this ethics complaint was handled was far different than certainly my ethics complaint. It wasn't an ethics complaint, it was a complaint, an investigation, I guess. That took, I think, 30 to 45 days. It took a long time. This one seemed odd. It was very short, just was able to look at evidence presented. I think the gentleman who looked at my investigation was able to interview several different people, looked at several different documents, it was like a real investigation. Our ethics code doesn't allow for that. It just seems ridiculous in many senses. So I don't know that it's really doing what the intent of the council was last year. So if it's not doing the intent, we would have to spend a lot of time, I think, trying to revise it. Or we could just say, you know, if there's a true complaint, then take it. The old route that used to, and that would be the legal course for like an OPMA issue or to the Attorney General. If we are keeping it, then I would say, let's expand the powers of the ethics officer to be able to interview people, to request documents, and to really make it a true investigation. Otherwise, I don't think it's going to have the true intent that's expected. Regards to timeline, 10 days is not acceptable. I think that is way too short. I would think a 30-day timeline would be more acceptable. I don't know how anybody can do a true thorough review. I think it, I think it doesn't have a positive process. If it's just 10 days, it's too short. Again, I throw the question out there, if we really need this ethics code. Aspirational standards, I think it's fine to have as part of the protocol manual, not here in ethics, because you're right, if you have it so low, somebody's grimace on their face, like in this most recent ethics complaint, can be questioned, and then now you have an ethics complaint going on. As far as retroactive, I think Councilmember Spivey, no. Agnew, you said it. Have it as the code at the time, just like every other code. So if it changes, it changes from that date going forward, right? And, yeah, I guess I'll leave it with them. I think that covers all five of them.
Okay.
You want to get out of here? Let's go. Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you, Mayor. So question one, OPMA, keep it with the city or state? I would be in favor of going to the state for most of the reasons that were stated previously. As far as expanding the review of an ethics officer, would that, if the OPMA is being reviewed by the state, do we need that service as well?
And again, it depends on the type of allegations. If it's, if it's any one of the other enumerated allegations, an investigation may elicit more information for the ethics officer. And again, that's the decision. Do you want the ethics officer to do that investigation, or do you want the complainant to do that investigation?
So I think if we give it to the state, we have, there's more room for the perceived open transparency process because somebody else outside of the city would be...
Correct.
Revealing. So I like that. But it just, having an understanding of if we do have parts of it within the city, then making sure that process, that investigation is expanded on would be important as well, I think. As far as timeline for responses, again, that depends on what that investigation looks like and how much time we think they need. But hopefully, we could put something in there that gives us the amount of time that they would need to do that scope of investigation.
And if I could jump in, the other suggestion that was made was that, depending if there's an extended investigation, that it would be 30 days after a certain period of time that we could define, whether it be the respondent's information or 30 days after the interviews are complete, but with an allowance. And I think the suggestion was through the city manager, that the city manager would then be authorized to extend that 30-day time limit another 10, 15, 20, 30 days as needed.
Okay. Let's see. Aspirational, I'm definitely for putting that part of the protocol manual, but would like to understand the wording and how that's all kind of put together and making sure that we're not opening ourselves up for any additional liabilities.
Correct.
Effective date, you know, if we make changes, I'm for, you know, making the changes and moving forward. You know, looking back, I'm not sure how that all works with looking back at previous investigations, but I think that if we're going to set new policy, the policy should take effect and then anything that happens beyond that is associated with that. But if we are going to retro back to handle former cases, then we should probably look at what that's going to look like and how that impacts us.
Councilmember Spivey?
I'll be brief. I'll just echo Councilmember Freed.
Okay.
I think you've got a majority on all those, but we can also, Councilmember Sandberg, your mic works now, by the way.
Okay. So the OPMA violation, it sounds like we're considering having that be handled through the state law process, and I'm okay with that. In terms of whether the ethics officer can have investigative ability, I think this was mentioned previously, I support that as long as the allegations go through a stronger filter through our internal staff before going to the ethics officer. Because we need to, we need to minimize, you know, the length of an investigation because we have to balance cost with transparency. And I think if we have two open-ended investigative powers, it could just be prohibitively expensive. But if there's a little bit more review on our end before things get sent to the ethics officer, I'm, I'm fine with investigative ability. I was reading that aspirational language in section B, and it's interesting how A has the shall, that we shall comply with laws. And then there's a whole long list of things in B that we should do. And there's some things in the should lists that could be added to the shall list. Things like attendance, and I think that's already in the protocol manual. But I don't even know if I, how comfortable I feel with, with some of this language, like, you know, we're encouraged to have, you know, our professional and personal conduct must be above reproach and avoid even the appearance of impropriety, you know? And, you know, say, for example, I have one too many McMenamins and I end up dancing on the table that night. You know, I have to suffer the embarrassment of that event, and then somebody who thinks I violated the code, and then all the public shaming that occurs later in the disposition where I could, you know, be admonished, reprimanded, or censured, and, you know, so...
And what would the interview process look for that?
I know.
If the, if the ethics officer hasn't expanded investigation power?
It'd probably be a lot of texted videos, but, you know, so I don't, that personal integrity section bothers me. I mean, because, yes, we want to act with integrity, but, you know, we, it's too open for judgment. Okay? But nepotism isn't, and neither is attendance or ex parte communication. So I think we could take a look at that. I think the timeline should be longer regardless of whether it stays with the current review of record or an investigation and with the possibility of extension. And I think changes should apply at the date that we adopt changes. I'm just, I said that because I don't think anybody's listening to the tape this late in the evening.
Which one? The dancing on the table?
Yeah.
McMenamins? Okay. Well, you have a majority anyways, but I'll just pile on. So OPMA in or out? I'd say out. I'd agree with the majority. Investigation authority? I'd say yes with some caveats. I think we shouldn't just throw the door open. One of the things I was thinking of, especially if OPMA is out, is that maybe the council would vote on whether an investigation would occur.
I think, yeah, the only problem, to kind of head that off of the pass, I think the problem is if there's a council member that's being investigated, having the council then decide whether or not it goes forward, the appearance of fairness issue comes in. That if council's being investigated, I think essentially, council should be removed from that process.
Okay. I was just thinking, you'd still have a majority there, so those people could recuse and then the remainers, but, okay. So the timeline for process, I'd say yes on making it longer, but not too long if investigations are allowed. The aspirational part, you know, looking at those, some of the, I agree with Councilmember Sandberg, some of them are kind of tangible, some of them are very, you know, in the eye of the beholder type of situation. So we definitely don't think those should be part of the ethics code. And then the effective date, I think it makes sense to make it effective the date that we pass it. Just like the majority. So I just want to say a couple of things. One thing is that it's important to understand that without investigation, that cost the city, and this is just the contract, so it was $16,500 for the Stedman case. So increasing that, doubling it, you know, we're talking $32,000 per, per ethics complaint. And when we established the code, from what I can remember, it was about the wing golf course, but what was concerning or why the councils really pushed to have an ethics code is that we felt like we had no ability to investigate the situation. And the only thing that, the only reason why we had an investigation done was the city manager at the time deemed it necessary, and he had it done. And I think the council felt like we wanted to have the ability to do that too and to vote on it, to do that. So that's what I remember why we thought we needed an ethics code. And I don't know if we could preserve that ability because it did seem for that, for that situation, it did seem like the public was upset that we couldn't do anything about it, and we were upset that we couldn't do anything about it, and that's why we have an ethics code now. I don't know if we need all the ethics code that we have in place now. I don't think it was, it wasn't very clear to all of us. I remember Jovek saying, you know, that we, he built stuff into the ethics code so that the cost was limited, and he estimated it'd be about 10 grand a year if we had an ethics violation. I don't think any of us kind of dug into what exactly what he meant by that, but that, he meant by not allowing investigations to happen is how I think he was trying to limit the cost.
I would agree with that, yes.
So I think you've got your direction.
All right. Thank you very much.
So we have no executive session. There's a, we're going to come back to you here, thank Councilmember Sandberg. Do we want to make a motion? How fast can you go? All right. Council committee report. Deputy Mayor.
Okay. I just wanted to share the Eastside Transportation Partnership meeting. So there was a presentation by Puget Sound Regional Council on Transportation 2040 Travel Trends, which I thought was really, really fascinating. And I have actually asked the gentleman who gave the report if he could provide Bothell specific information. So Mr. Jean and I are working on getting him here. But by 2017, our four-county region will have eclipsed 4 million residents. Transit boarding growth has outpaced both population and employment growth in our region. Our region is adding jobs faster than people. King County has more jobs than houses. Snohomish, Kitsap, and Pierce have more houses than jobs. Regarding Wash dot tolling update, it's been nine months since tolling began. Recognition of the real congestion problems around Bothell has, was addressed. And moving ahead with creating a hard shoulder on 405 between 527 and I-5, the, well, we got an update today. I don't know, maybe I'll let Aaron share that. But we had an update that that's moving forward, a hard shoulder that can be used as an extra lane during peak hours. There's been a 10% increase in transit ridership since tolls went into effect. And because tolls are bringing in more money than Wash out anticipated, they'll be able to move ahead with further improvements soon... to move ahead with further improvements sooner than expected. And I think our little area can expect to receive some of that attention and money. And as Councilmember Sandberg said, they'll be deciding soon on whether or not to keep toll lanes free nights and weekends. And in our meeting today with Wash dot, they believe that it will remain. And then Snohomish County Steering Committee, there's a discussion of Snohomish County, countywide recommendations for PSRC regional funds. And those include SWIFT BRT, and these are ones that would affect us, and operating adaptive signal control systems. And then for the 2018, 2020 projects, two Bothell projects are included, that's the North Creek Trail Section 4 and the 228th Street pavement overlay. And then Bothell has five projects on the contingency list. Was that quick enough?
That was very quick. So we are going to have to extend to discuss the Wash dot letters. So do we have a motion to extend?
Move to extend to 10:05.
Move to extend to 10:05. I'll second it. All those in favor, we don't have voting, so just raise your hand. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Okay, pass unanimously. Can we start with the Public Works Director, or do you want to?
Sure.
Okay. Could you give us some staff advice about sending a letter to Wash dot in regards? Do you remember what Councilmember Sandberg asked earlier?
I think so.
Okay.
And correct me if I'm off. So the Transportation Commission, I believe, is scheduled to, is it Transportation Commission or Tolling Commission? Scheduled to make their decision next Tuesday on if they're going to make permanent the current tolling mechanism on 405, which is free travel for everyone evenings and weekends. And I believe it's off-peak, it's two-plus carpool instead of three, or during the peak hours, it's three-plus. We've had, as Deputy Mayor mentioned, we had a meeting with Wash dot staff today, and they were very confident that that will continue to be the model for tolling going forward. It sounds that they're still, even with this model, that they are still making more revenue than they anticipated. So I don't know if it's necessary that council take action. It certainly can't hurt.
Thank you. So Councilmember Sandberg?
So I just wanted to know if council was willing to have a letter that says we support the continuation on a permanent basis of the removal, of the prohibition of tolls, not prohibition, but the free access as it is now.
So you mentioned some other things, too, that you wanted in the letter?
Yeah, because that's to the, that's, so that is the Transportation Commission meeting, and then the Tolling Commission meeting is on other things like, you know, the unanticipated revenue. And they say that the revenue is going to go in the 405 corridor. Well, that doesn't mean it's going to, it's, yeah, it could be down in Renton, and they've been talking about down in Renton. And so they have kind of created a problem, a big problem in Bothell. When you look at the heat maps of traffic, pre and post tolling, all of the detrimental impact has been shifted to Bothell. And so I would like us to be a little more vocal in saying, you know, for those, for that excess revenue, you need to be spending it here in Bothell, and here's why. Look at your heat map.
So is there any council member opposed to me signing a letter that the Public Works Department drafts prior to Tuesday? Their meeting, I imagine, is during the day, Tuesday? Or is it at night, Monday? Either way, we're not going to meet before it happens again. So that says that we support the continuation of the tolling being limited on the evenings and weekends, and that we want to see the excess revenue reinvested in our section of 405? Does anybody have any problem with that, sending that letter? Staff, are we going to ruffle some feathers if we send a letter like that?
I don't believe so. And I believe, actually, according to the same meeting today, is that Wash dot is hearing you, and Wash dot is hearing the Bothell community and the communities north about the issues that are at hand. And they are prepared to ask the legislature this coming session for additional design funding for the additional tolling lanes on 405. So it's appropriate. I don't think it will ruffle feathers. I will draft it so that, with the intent that it won't. And as we speak about and adopt your legislative agenda in short order, that would be an appropriate place to really speak strongly about providing Wash dot adequate funding for this corridor.
Okay. Is everybody okay on this side of me signing that letter? Okay. On behalf of the council?
Can I ask a question?
Sure. Just a real quick, Bob Jean?
Not on that subject.
Oh, you have a difference. Oh, you have, we didn't, oh, just saying, go ahead. Councilmember McNeil.
So I just wanted to, is it possible for the rest of the council to see kind of what the Wash dot presented today? Is it possible to send that to everybody?
I would rather wait until after the deputy mayor goes to the EAG meeting next Monday, because I believe that they'll have more refined information after that, so she can provide that to the council.
Okay.
Or staff can provide that to the council afterward.
Okay, thanks.
All right, Bob.
Mr. Jean, you've got two minutes.
Far less than that. Just to remind council, Friday night, I know we've got folks coming and going over the course. We'll do with what we have. But 5:30, we'll have dinner in the conference room. We'll be working there. And then Saturday, we'll be actually here around tables with the ELT to actually get into the goal-setting side. So Saturday, 9 to 4, and Friday night, hopefully about 5:30 to 8:30. That's all. That was less than two minutes.
Okay. Do we have a motion adjourned? Motion moved by Deputy Mayor, seconded by Councilmember McNeil. All those in favor, raise your hands, say aye. Aye, we adjourn.